Raise your hands and go woo. That's it. Thank you. On a sad note, Councilman Hank Dixon's dad, Harry, passed away after a long illness. And condolences to Harry's wife, Marie, to Hank, and to the whole Dixon family. And thank you for coming. All right. At this point in time, I will call a meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jim Littleton from the Holly Springs United Methodist Church. Welcome back, Pastor. Can we blame you for the cold weather?
No, I don't think so.
I'm not the weatherman, so blame Don Schwinnaker.
I hear you.
A brief reading from Romans, if I may. Chapter 8, verse 24 and 25. "For in hope we were saved. Now, hope that is seen is not hope; for who hopes for what is seen? But if we hope for what we do not see, we wait for it with patience." The new year, we have hopes. Maybe some of us hope that it's a better year than last year. Maybe some of us hope it's as good of a year as last year. Maybe we hope for something new. We have hopes and dreams for the new year. In all things, we hope that we can help God's plan for us come to be and God's kingdom to come. Let us pray. Creative God, you make all things new in heaven and on earth. We come to you in a new year with new desires and old fears, new decisions and old controversies, new dreams and old weaknesses. Because you are a God of hope, we know that you create all the possibilities of the future. Because you are a God of love, we know that you accept all the mistakes of the past. Because you are the God of our faith, we enter your gates with thanksgiving and praise. We come into your presence every day joyful as we serve you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you so much. I remember four. Adjustment approval of the January 6, 2015 meeting agenda. Mayor Protim.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second. Motion made in second or in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. I remember five is a public comment period. At this point in time, we'll open that up. And Amy Marks has signed up. Amy, I thought I saw you someplace. There you are. Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Rifkin Marks. And I'm newly to Holly Springs area. I'm here about a year and a half. And I have two children. And there's one sport that they really, really miss. And that's handball and paddleball. Now, we're from the north, and it's a big sport there. But there is no handball and paddleball court here at all. So I was just asking if maybe we could find a place in the park where it just takes cement, a cement block, where the kids could stay out of trouble, and the adults can have an additional sport.
We'll take a look at that.
Is it paddleball and?
And racquetball.
Handball, racquetball.
Yeah. I know what you're talking about. Handball years ago.
Yeah, it's just a cement. Because the kids, I mean, the kids, my kids always played it. And racquetball, the men, my father always still plays it. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing and go to... Close the public comment period. Go to the public hearing. Agenda item 6A, public hearing 14DO01 BERT subdivision, Laura Holloman.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
The development option subdivision before you tonight, known as the BERT tract, is located along New Hill Road as shown here in the red, totaling just over 150 acres. It's located just past the second entrance of the existing 12 Oaks subdivision on the south side. And as you recall, it was rezoned to R-10 conditional use on September of 2014 of last year. At that time, it was, these were the approved zoning conditions that were voluntarily submitted with the application and will run with the land forever. They would have to go through the rezoning process from start to finish again to amend these. But as it stands today, these are those zoning conditions. The gross residential density shall not exceed 2.5. Lot shall not be less than 7,500 square feet. Each car, excuse me, each house providing at least a standard two-car garage. Vinyl siding being prohibited, except as accent elements, which will be limited to 20% of the total facade. Lots greater than 65 feet in width shall show house foundations of at least 12 inches vertically of brick or stone veneer over the entire foundation. Each lot shall have a minimum of following, a minimum of two trees, a minimum of one tree or four shrubs, or a minimum of eight shrubs. Decorative front garage doors, front-loaded, and architectural shingles will be required, with the exception of any secondary building located behind the primary house. This is the site plan, showing a total of 342 lots. Proposed density is around 2.2, so they're well below the allowed density of 2.5, as stipulated with the zoning conditions that I just discussed. The minimum lot size area, if you remember, is 7,500. They're showing an average lot size of 11,430 square feet. So that's, they've also shown, it's important to figure out, a lot of questions from the public. I get asked, what's the difference between normal conventional subdivision and development option subdivision? And under development option subdivision requirements, the developer has to provide a higher-quality product and additional elements throughout the subdivision that would normally not be required in a standard subdivision, in exchange for utilizing smaller minimum lot sizes. So for example, they have stipulated open space requirements. They have to provide at least 10% of the total project area as open space, and half of that has to be developed. So it can't just be, you know, an unusable stream buffer that you wouldn't be able to use in any case. So that has to be an actual active developed area as an amenity for residents. And they've provided an amenity site, as well as an open playfield here. And they've got numerous pocket park areas as well. You can see here in other areas as well throughout the subdivision that they've shown those as well. So in terms of open space, they're required to have 15.8. They're providing 25.3. And 11.2 of that is active. Another requirement for the subdivision for development options is sidewalks are required to be on both sides of the street, even on cul-de-sacs. They've done that. They're also required to have greater architectural standards. That's the table that you found in your packet. But it talks about really a lot of things with regards to the ultimate home design that we check for with each building permit that comes in to ensure it meets the requirement. So like a variation in materials where they have nice accent siding with brick, things like that, permanent window grids, decorative garage doors, change in elevation of roof ridge, dormers, covered porches, things like that, where it's not just a flat unimaginative design. So it really kind of beefs up the standards as whatever builders come in that they have to meet. So that ensures that we've gotten some architectural quality there. This is the landscape plan. These are showing our street trees. They do meet our new and improved requirements. They're providing them between the curb and sidewalk, but they're stipulating that they'll be with fruit guards, and they also be a minimum of two street, two street tree species per residential street. So if we don't, if we get a platter disease, it doesn't wipe out the entire thing. I can tell you, I've looked at this, and there's no sycamores on here. These are part of, we do have a preferred landscape material list that we look and verify, and these are, the species shown do meet our standards for street tree species that we allow for. That is, in terms of other landscaping, they're providing a 50-foot B-225 buffer along Holly Springs, New Hill Road. They're also required to provide development options. They're required to provide a 20-foot A-20 green belt buffer, which a conventional subdivision wouldn't come into play. They wouldn't have to provide anything. But they're showing two shade trees and a shrub. And it's basically, of course, the least restrictive buffer, but gives the green belt here adjacent to pretty much Duke land, with the exception of some property owners along here. So that's, that meets our requirements. If there's any other questions of me, I'll be glad to entertain it. Elizabeth is also here and can answer any engineering questions you have. The planning board did discuss this in December. Talked about the importance of locating parks throughout the subdivision and asked what was planned in the active open space areas within the subdivision. We talked about how the amenity center would be, you know, traditional, perhaps clubhouse pool facility. Talked about the active, of course, playing field that we talked about. And also talked about, you know, those, there's also pocket lots throughout the subdivision that didn't make up a lot, but would be open space. So we talked about the importance of how they would like to see benches and gazebos and other gathering areas. I talked about the success of that in other subdivisions currently, like 12 Oaks and newer subdivisions, and how they would like to see those throughout the community. And also talked about the, the board also stressed the importance of a large town park being located in this area of town.
Questions to Laura?
Laura, does this, I thought I saw it on there somewhere, was they've got an area for the new postal service pickup set aside? Is that going to be, what's it going to be in effect in this subdivision as they come on?
Right. They have indicated that that'll be within the amenity area, which makes sense because we do require any mailbox location that's going to have more than 19 boxes. We require them to provide off-street and handicap parking, and it'd be a covered structure. So when that comes in, they will be required to submit those permits through us, and we'll make sure that they meet all of our standards that are in place at this point.
Does that cut into their open space area?
Well, you've seen other, we've had a number of other subdivisions do this retroactively. Morgan Park did it recently, where they amended their Rick Center plans. And it really doesn't, we've seen that they have, usually have a lawn area that they're able to easily fit it behind the sidewalk. And so it doesn't cut into it substantially.
Now, where exactly will those, is it in this area with the triangle like there? Is that where the boxes will be?
It'll be, it'll be most likely in the amenity site area, which is adjacent to this roundabout at the entrance.
Just to reconfirm, the gross residential density will not exceed 2.5 units per acre, correct?
That's correct, and they're showing.
7,500 square feet lots, minimum.
And they're showing 2.2, which is well below that.
Thank you.
And this is, how many homes?
342.
Okay.
They're going to put all the mailboxes in that one area?
Mm-hmm.
And that's pretty much what we can expect going forward for any of these.
It's like you're in the most office.
Well, I'm just talking about the traffic of people going in and getting their mail.
Just the way it's going to be.
Wow.
Yeah. Other questions to Laura?
Do we, Laura, do we have, do we know where the park, the town park is going to be?
That was, that was really a comment that planning board wanted to document, to put out there for you all, as well as the town, that they would like to see a town park in this area of town. So we don't have anything currently shown on the master plan in this area, but they stress the need for that in the future.
Yeah.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Don Mizell, you're number one.
If you want to scroll through. Okay.
You know the drill.
Going to have to tilt the microphone up.
Yeah. Up and down, up and down.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Don Mizell with Longleaf Development Services, 208 Premier Drive, Holly Springs. As always, Laura has done a very thorough job of bringing it to speed on our request. When we were last here before you, it was late summer, getting the rezoning in place and the conditions that go along with that. I'm pleased to say that we were able to abide by all those conditions and actually kind of approve upon the density a little bit as we move through our subdivision planning process. Joining me tonight and available for questions either during the public hearing or after are members of our development team. Our developer is Deacon Investments. Matt Brubaker is here. Matt, would you raise your hand? Our project engineer is Mr. Robbie Bell with Bass, Nixon, and Kennedy. Robbie? And our environmental specialist consultant on this project is Mr. Phil May. Phil, you guys may remember Phil. He's done a lot of work on Utley Creek as part of a town project regarding some sewer expansion at the wastewater plant. So we think we've got the, probably the one guy on the planet that knows Utley Creek better than anybody else. And the planning board during our rezoning mentioned their concerns about, you know, nearby wetlands and floodplains in Utley Creek. So we made sure we had Phil on the team and consulted with him as we developed our plans. Even though that's off our property, we want to make sure we paid careful attention to those natural features. Real quick, I'll take you through this colored rendering, and it may help you understand kind of how the property is laid out a little better than the engineered drawings, no offense, Robbie, that you had in your packet. The site itself is divided into kind of four pods, if you'll follow my mouse here. You've got a pod here separated by a stream with a relatively small drainage area. You have another pod here. There's a stream kind of separating it from the rest of the property. Another one here, and then a larger stream, and some Duke Energy Land here. In fact, the white peninsulas, if you will, that are fingers that go up and form these peninsulas are Duke Energy Land. But what that does is kind of lend this property to be developed in four kind of distinct areas. And we looked at, per the planning board's guidance during our rezoning, you know, let's try to keep the higher density and smaller lots further away from any off-site natural features. And I think we've done a good job of accomplishing that. I'll take you through the color code real quick. The smaller lots that we're enabled to do through the development incentives, development options, part of the UDO, those lots are shown in the yellow in this location here. And those go down towards the smallest allowable lots of, I think, 7,500 square feet. They're about 60-foot wide on average, but not all of them are at the minimum of 7,500 square feet. It's probably more akin to a R-8, R-10 hybrid zoning. While the lots are a little more narrow, they're certainly not at the bare minimum across the board. But we've located those lots kind of away from the off-site natural features and as best we can, you know, to the areas of the site that are most developable and suited for grading and for smaller lots. The orange lots located here off this entrance, and down here on both sides of the stream here, and a few here, these are 70-foot wide lots. And basically, that's a R-10 lot. That's your minimum lot size, width size for R-10 straight subdivision. No development options, you know, to get down to that size of lot. And again, most of the lots are 10,000 or above or in that ballpark. So that's kind of a typical 10,000 square foot lot, R-10 you'd see. The lots in pink, as you're getting closer to the eastern part of the site, you're getting closer to Thomas Mill Pond, you're getting closer to Utley Creek. That site just lends itself better to larger lots. And we're fortunate in this case that the developer has an interest in doing larger lots. And by larger lots, these are 90-foot wide. Again, your 70-foot wide lot is your minimum lot size for R-10, so this is probably more akin to an R-15 type of zoning. And we've got some even larger lots, probably 15,000, 20,000 square feet, kind of down here towards the extreme southeastern part of the property. But what we've tried to do is have three types of lot products on the site and locate those where they make the most sense from a developability standpoint. And we were, you know, just kind of want to go over this with you and kind of show you our thought process that led through the plan you see before you tonight, and kind of how we've gotten from point A to point B. But it was well received by the planning board. I think they appreciated the larger lots down here closer to the off-site environmental features. And again, from a marketing standpoint, I think it's great to have three different types of lots on the property. The price range of the homes, I know folks are always curious about that. Based on our development costs and potential lot pricing, we're thinking probably in the $350,000 to $500,000 range, based on where you're located on the property. I don't believe a builder has been chosen yet, so that's, that's the best we can do at this point, is give you a range. But that's kind of where we see this, this deal heading. Of course, we talked about the open space earlier. We do plan an amenity center up here by the traffic circle. Junior Olympic-sized pool is kind of what we've got in mind there with some common open space area. Of course, the postal kiosk will have to be there as well and utilize the parking lot. Playfields, wherever we can find a spot, there, here's a good area for an open playfield. And as Laura mentioned, our open space areas that are scattered throughout the pocket parks, and even maybe these medians, we're thinking about pergolas, gazebos, benches, most like they've done at 12 Oaks. And that's, I think it's been really well done out there, and certainly we'll, you know, imitations, the best form of flattery, I guess, we'll look to them and what they've done and kind of incorporate it out here. Of course, double sidewalks throughout the community, so it's very walkable. That's a requirement of the development options. And again, to point out the density, we're closer to two than we are to two and a half. We're like at 2.18, 2.2 units per acre. And to put a number on that, as far as what that means from the 2.5 we could have gone to, it's about 50 lots less than we could do per zoning. So, and again, we could find a home for those 50 lots out here. There's no question about that. Between the yellow lots and the pink lots, we could definitely tighten those up and get 50 more, but we're satisfied with the distribution and allocation of lots we have right now, even though it is 50 lots less than we could achieve. I guess one parting comment, something of interest, that may interest the board, on the council. This community will have reclaimed water. We will be running a reuse water line, reclaimed water line, from, I guess, the second entrance at 12 Oaks, about a half a mile or so. Elizabeth, please just jump in if I'm off on my distances there. But running that feeder line down to our entrance and then throughout all the streets in the subdivision. So the future residents out here will have the ability to tap on to the town's reclaimed water system. Of course, that certainly helps the town as well from utilizing that resource.
That's all the lots, Don?
All the lots.
All the lots?
Yep.
Super.
So that's kind of a summary of where we came from, where we're at, and some of the neat things we think we have going on in the project. And at some point, we will give it an official name. The working name has been the BERT tract. I've suggested several things to Matt. He shot them all down, so we're still working on that, and eventually we'll have a name for you. But we're here to answer any questions you have, either during the public hearing or afterwards.
Okay. Any questions? Don, why's up?
Nothing right now.
Nope.
I did want to just tell people, some people may not know about the postal kiosk, that when are they going to put it into effect that all new subdivisions have to, not going to have individual mailboxes? You're going to have the group, almost kind of like you see at townhomes or apartments, for all subdivisions, no matter how big, how small.
Correct.
I think that's in place now, actually.
Is it in place now? So they're going away with the individual mailboxes, postal delivery to each house.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
We also have Robbie Bell. You want to add anything, Robbie?
I would be.
Are any questions, Robbie?
No, sir.
Looking good. Okay. Then at this point in time, we'll close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. I have two motions, I believe.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for development option plan petition 14DO01 for the BERT tract to allow for development options to be used in the R-10 CU residential zoning district as submitted by Bass, Nixon, and Kennedy, dated revised December 2, 2014.
Second. Motion made in second or in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously, number two.
Motion to approve development option plan petition 14DO01 for BERT subdivision to allow for development options to be used in the R-10 CU residential zoning district as submitted by Bass, Nixon, and Kennedy, dated revised December 2, 2014, with conditions to be recorded in the minutes. Next three slides.
They're all there. Trust me.
As shown in the next three slides.
That's good enough. Motion made in second or in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Agenda item 7A, consent agenda. Mayor Protim.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made in second or in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item 8A, enter new business, 02MAS 11A13, South Park Village Master Plan Amendment. Laura, you're back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't think we had anything that I could remember.
Okay. South Park Master Plan Amendment before you tonight is for a request to add one out parcel by subdividing Lot 14 into 14A and 14B, which is shown here in this area. So just to orient you, this is Village Walk Drive. This is Highway 55. This is your Chick-fil-A, your BB and T, your fancy new Dairy Queen. Vacant lot here, and then this is, this is your amendment here. So the request is to subdivide 14 into 14A and 14B. That will result in a new area of 14A being .79 acres and 14B being 2.39 acres. Of course, as you see, by A13, that stands for a number of amendments, so we've had 13 amendments along the way. And we've, in recent years, the developer, of course, has initiated several amendments to create more out parcels that can be, of course, purchased by an outside entity. And up to this point, staff really, we've really had no issues with this because the lots that were subdivided were intended to be out parcels themselves. For example, we had out parcel eight, which was subdivided into smaller out parcels. So you have the Sherone Williams, and then the out parcel where a quick-lube facility has been approved there. So we, but we knew that that was apples to apples. That was an out parcel lot always, and was that, that was its original intent. But the original approval for Lot 14, this is what was shown and approved to us with phase one. So this was a multi-tenant building totaling over 28 and a half thousand square feet. This was the approved architecture here, so it was meant to emulate and really be a bookend for what was on the other side with the Harris teater and the anchoring of the multi-tenant shops there. And that was really the original intent of South Park, was to create this intermingling of compatible uses that was meant to create a pedestrian-oriented feel. I mean, that's why we have these angled parking spaces along Village Walk Drive, because the intent was for that to be a low-speed pedestrian-oriented shopping center. It was never meant to be the cut-through road that it is now. If it had been, I guarantee that engineering wouldn't have parking there. But it is what it is. But this is, you know, this is why we see that angled parking here, because the intent is for it to be very walkable. You have, you have buildings up close to the street, whereas you don't have, you know, predominantly vehicle-oriented uses where it's set back and you have parking, a vast amount of parking in the front. You know, certainly important to point out that this Lot 14 has a minimum setback of eight feet and a maximum setback of 15. So it's really meant to be a pedestrian-oriented parcel. It's not meant to have a fast food orientation or other heavy traffic on it. So that's really the purpose of staff's standpoint for recommending denial for this, is we see it, this is what was originally shown to us and was approved for this lot. Our allowance of, let me show this, of all these out parcels here, we knew that those were the closest to Ralph Stevens Road, but we saw this area that at least we had some semblance of a multi-tenant integrated shopping center on that area as well. And this is the last final opportunity we have for that to ever occur on Village Walk Drive. So with this amendment, you know, this is So with this amendment, you know, this is, this is our last shot. If, if, so, we as staff are, are fighting hard to, to have that remain in place so that this entire, uh, view corridor isn't lost to, to out parcels.
Questions or comments, or Laura?
Um, just, I sort of echo what you're saying there. I remember when this was first presented to us and the preliminary, uh, visuals that we were provided, that this was going to be a walkable thing with all of these stores along there, so that you had sidewalks, parking right up front, and it echoed the, or mimicked the, uh, other side of the road there. And to have just a couple of out parcels there, sort of takes away that whole, uh, feeling there. Uh, so, to me, it, it, it makes it less of a development that we had looked at, uh, when we first approved this years ago. How many years ago did we approve this?
Well, the, the master plan was, was brought, 2002, so, yeah, 2002, 2003 was when that was done.
Anyway, that's, I just remember what we looked at when they showed us the, the visuals, what they envisioned there, and that this is a car cry from that.
And, and I agree with Tim, and across the way there, next to the Mexican restaurant, you have that new building with the, you know, Carolina Vision and everything in there, and that, you know, it looks very nice. Um, so then to break up.
How is this going to affect the traffic? Uh, engineering, I guess engineering would talk on that?
Sure.
Come on up.
Knew we would get you up here.
Hi, Elizabeth.
I wouldn't want to miss out on coming up and chatting with you guys.
It's your big chance.
When, um, out parcels come in like this, um, well, the subdivision plan itself does not trigger traffic studies to be updated, but when each out parcel comes in, we require them to verify that the traffic study that was done adequately covered the uses that are being proposed. So whenever the specific tenants come in, we will be asking them to verify, um, their use. But as far as a multi-tenant building versus out parcels, it could be very similar. Um, it could be different, but it, it could be similar or less traffic, and so we'll cross that bridge when we know who is going in.
It's too early to determine.
And the parking? I mean, have we talked about parking being developed or designed a certain way? Because we assumed this.
With the site plan, the only parking that's, it's what's there currently is the diagonal parking is the only parking that's in place right now.
Because right now, there is a speed limit sign that was put up by the management, I believe the company, um, of 10 miles per hour. So that's not followed at all, of course, um, so, but I, I mean, at least it alerts people to know there is a concern of that, of speed through there.
Okay. Thanks, Elizabeth.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments?
Laura, do we know what they're planning on that?
I, I was gonna go over Planning Board's recommendation. Uh, they actually went, um, against staff's recommendation and wanted to approve the amendment. Uh, they discussed, um, talking about how this would, although this went against the previously approved and agreed center that we just discussed and, uh, went over with you, they really, uh, felt like this would not be a major detriment to the overall center, and were satisfied that both the design, uh, guidelines that were in place with South Park Village, as well as the town's strong architectural requirements would ensure a high-quality building, ultimately we put there. They were satisfied with the quality of buildings, even if they were out parcel buildings that have been built there, you know, the, the nice Chick-fil-A, the nice Dairy Queen, the nice BB and T. They felt like that, um, they were satisfied with, with the plans that were in place. Um, also, um, the design team is here, uh, the engineer, Diane Batai, is here, as well as, uh, the owner, Phil Stevens, so I want to give them an opportunity to, if you have any questions.
What's being planned for this?
He can answer that question for you. Defer to the applicant. I think we're ready for him at this point.
Again, name and address, please, you know the drill.
My name is Phil Stevens, and I live at 502 North Innes Street in Fuquay Varina. I've been coming before this committee for so long that it's embarrassing. I think I came the first time in 2000 or some date like that. Uh, my family waited 10 years for the, uh, bypass to materialize, and another four years for Harris Teeter. And then when, um, we opened in September of 2009, uh, we had the worst recession since the 1930s. So we've had, um, more than our share of, uh, ups and downs with respect, uh, to this project. I want to start out by saying that, uh, the things that Laura said about, uh, our vision for the plan here, uh, were correct. Um, actually, it was my dream and my vision, uh, to have this main street, um, a shopping center in Holly Springs. I went around from time to time calling it the Karen Village or Holly Springs, just for a, you know, moniker. And, um, I would say, though, that, um, uh, even from the beginning of the planning of it, uh, I never really knew, um, how strong the respective markets for out parcels would be, uh, as against the market for, uh, shops would be. And, uh, even though we did have this string of shops, uh, laid out along both sides of this main street, uh, I had been in the shopping center business for 30 years, and I can tell you, I knew this, the further away you get from that Harris Teeter, unless you have, uh, uh, high, high quality, uh, high credit, uh, retailers down that end, if you put them there, they'll go bankrupt, period. So unless you could get, uh, uh, other, uh, high net worth, uh, anchor tenants down toward the Walmart end, uh, you wasn't going to lease them anyway, or if you were, you know, you're just building, uh, vacant space. This, uh, type of shopping center, if I could give you about a one-minute lecture, uh, we categorize things, it looks like everywhere, uh, in the world, and this is called a grocery anchored strip center. And it has a grocery store, and they always have somewhere between 10,000 square feet of shops, and sometimes 35 or 45, maybe a high of even 50,000 square feet if it's in a real, real dense, uh, area. Whereas your, uh, Target Center is called a big box or a power center. And, uh, different type tenants go to different, uh, shopping centers. And, uh, so I would also say that had it not been for, uh, for, uh, the Target Center coming along, it's a possibility we could have gotten, uh, one or two, uh, of those mid-sized boxes, uh, to come with us. But that's just a supposition on my part, you know? Uh, I can't really prove that, and they, they probably are really here because they wanted to be with Target, so, uh, I, I, I don't know. What I do know is that, uh, we want to finish this up, and, uh, I think we can finish it this year. Um, and I want to say one last thing about this. This last, uh, subdivision, uh, i- if it is granted, the 2.4 acres that remains, I'm pretty sure will have to be developed into a multi-tenant building, because the area in front of, directly in front of the Harris Teeter store, we have to leave open and, and can't build a building on that pursuant to the lease that we have with Harris Teeter. If we did, they'd sue us. Uh, but we can build a building as big as about 18,000 square feet, uh, along Village Walk Drive there. That's how big the remaining building would be. Uh, so I feel pretty sure that would be, uh, a, a building cut up into shops. Now, it could be that there's, uh, a restaurant, uh, on the Highway 55 side, and shops on the, uh, uh, Village Walk Drive side. It's next to impossible to know, you know, with any certainty, how this leasing, um, is going to progress in the future, because you really don't know, uh, you know, who you're going to, uh, be fortunate enough to, to get. So that's where we've been, and that's where we are now, and, um, I appreciate your listening, and if you have any other questions of me or my civil engineer, we're...
I think you haven't answered my question. What, what kind of business are you planning for that area?
I'm sorry?
What kind of business do you anticipate for that area?
For that, uh, we don't have anybody in specifically yet. I'm sorry.
If you could just go back, sir, um, and move the mouse and show us, you're talking about the, uh, the area on the right, the bigger two-point, whatever the acreage is right there, yeah? That's what you hope still to get a larger building in, and then this, uh, smaller building in the, uh, 14A that, that's broken off?
Uh, that is correct. And, and what, the point I was trying to make is, this, that, watch me move this mouse. There'd be a sightline, I'm not even, see, I'm so old, I can't move it straight. Uh, it, it goes really parallel with the, uh, the, the street. And, uh, uh, that's the, the sightline that we have to respect. So, the, the parking would, would occur in this area, and the 18,000 square foot building is, which is the maximum size of it, uh, would be, you know, in this area. And, uh, I'm pretty much, so if you, if you go back to the, uh, elevations, and I don't know how to do that, but we could get back there if we, it would be, uh, you still have about half of the, uh, of the elevation. Uh, Don, can you show them up?
Yeah, probably, like, that's about half right there.
Yeah, we still have about half of the elevation that, that we are showing there.
And there was interesting, when you were explaining the sightline, uh, you have to leave that sightline open so they can see the Harris Teeter, is that what it is?
That's right. All anchor tenants, uh, I mean, they, the minute you try to fool with any aspect of, uh, their visibility, their parking, or their ingress and egress, they go nuts. And the, uh, courts have upheld, uh, in their favor, uh, uh, you know, their right to insist upon, uh, those three things. Landlords messing around with, uh, you, you know, that, you know, pretty much will lose. Dick can tell you that. And, um, uh, so we had to agree to that in, uh, Harris Teeter lease, and it's there.
Okay, and interesting.
Further questions?
Um, no, just trying to picture it, a little bit. Visualize what? But no, I don't have a question.
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to ask the question in terms of...
You want to go back to the, uh...
The site plan is, is right there, and the, so, from the little, uh, well, the, the road that comes across by the Mexican restaurant to the right, that would be parking, so that, a parking area, so that Harris Teeter, you can see Harris Teeter from...
Right here.
The street. Yeah, that would be parking, and you're talking about the 18,000 square foot building coming to back over this way.
And, and that would be right, almost dead opposite, um, west of Mexica.
Right.
Dead opposite, straight across from them, and then carving out this extra parcel of 14A to .8, .79 acres and having that as something or other, a building, bank, restaurant, whatever.
Mm-hmm. That's correct, you have it.
Anything else for them?
I think that you're giving you, giving you a chance for two buildings on there instead of just one long one?
That's right.
Pretty much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining.
Maybe. No. We'll see. All right, further discussion for the board. Seeing none? Laura, anything else?
Well, I do have something to say.
No.
You know, I see what here, I see a conflict between what the town staff sees as a, um, what we already have dreamed would be there.
Mm-hmm.
And on the other side, I see the reality of the market.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And the people who hold that land and actually hold the cost of that land, so that, I, I see that, that's the conflict. And our role, I think, tonight is to say, okay, what, what do we do here? And what, do we, do we stifle economic possibilities there, or do we wait and see, keep it like it is and, and wait and see what's going to happen? So I think that's the decision on that, and I am not ever in favor of trying to stifle economic development. You know, I think they're, they're the ones that holds the, um, the pocketbook. You know, they're the ones that own the land and so forth, so I mean, that's...
And by stifling, meaning just...
Well, leaving it like it is, hoping, you know, they know, they know, they know what the market will bear, okay? And what would they, they're able to, um, build there and sell it, or lease it, or whatever. It's not really, we're not taking the risk on it. We're just hoping that this, you know...
And I, um, with the explanation that you gave, I, that helped me a lot.
Me too, it did.
Because, uh, I saw what we was, you hoped to get, uh, 10, 12, 14 years ago, as far as a building there, and, uh, the reality of what you've seen in the marketplace, uh, we see all of the stuff along in front of Mar, of Walmart, still, all those out parcels there are still empty, and, um, this, you've been filling in piece by piece, coming along, and, uh, I think this, you think, has a better chance of succeeding, and I think that's what we want. We want our businesses to succeed.
We didn't sell one single thing for three years.
Go to the mic, will you, Phil?
Okay, now, see, uh, we didn't sell one single thing, uh, for three years, uh, after the recession. I think it was, um, 2010 or 11 before we sold, uh, the Sherwin-Williams building, and then the, um, uh, Orthodontist, uh, and then, uh, Dr. Bryan, uh, that we have done, and, um, we have, uh, four or five people looking at this now, uh, really strongly. And I, I believe it's a, a combination of the economy still getting better, you know, the strength of the, especially in the triangle area, the strength of the economy, uh, 540, the housing growth, uh, you know, that you all have here, and all of those factors. I mean, um, you know, um, so we, we do see more strength and activity in it. Uh, I don't think, I, I, I don't think there's a whole lot more of a market for retailing on our end of town, unless and until there's further growth there, which of course there will be, um, or until that hospital materializes. Uh, now, the, up there further, where, you know, the Target, that's going to keep going and going. Uh, but that is so big and so powerful, that makes its own statement, and, uh, um, the type of tenants that go to those, those big box centers, uh, type development's always going to, uh, you know, be able to, uh, to work with them. And, um, but, and it's not a thing, I mean, uh, I, in a lot of respects, I think our location is better than theirs, but, um, it's, it's not, um, it's, it's a different type of shopping center, you know, uh, than theirs is.
I think, I think one other thing, and I think, I agree, I know exactly what Lyndon and Tim are saying, but I think, um, and your explanation really helped, is, uh, aesthetically is what I think is important to the aesthetics, and then, and also with the, the traffic flow through there, so, I mean...
Well, you know, uh, if, if, if I could toot my own horn a little bit, uh, the out parcels that we've done there, you got to say, that is the best group, uh, one of the finest groupings of, of businesses that you'll ever see on a shopping center.
I'm going to have to say something. DQ, I mean, it goes from your lips to your hips.
I'm sorry?
I love DQ.
Dairy Queen.
You love what?
I love DQ.
Dairy Queen.
Dairy Queen, but it goes from your lips to your hips.
Well, at least, at least they built, at least they built an, an attractive building.
I've already been there, I've had an...
I've had the same thing. But, you know, uh, they're all blue chip tenants, uh, that any shopping center would be proud of, except for the, uh, low, you know, the, uh, the two medical facilities, and they built, uh, attract, very attractive buildings, and, um, it, it's just, they're all, and the town was, you know, very, very, uh, worked hand and glove with us on that. That's why the buildings came out to be as attractive as they did.
Well, Mr. Stevens, one thing that I too want to say this, that we have an absolutely awesome staff.
Have a what?
An awesome staff.
Uh-huh.
And our staff is excellent at giving us advice on this, on these kinds of issues. So, um, I know there's, there's a thing that says denial, to deny this, but, um, and, and I think for myself, I really struggled with that, because I, I don't like to, um, the staff is just, they're very bright and they're very good at what they do, so...
Well, I'll leave you one last thought. Um, when I was, before the Planning Board, uh, that very topic, uh, came up, and Jeff Jones made the point that, um, we know what we have... point that we know what we have now, and we have what we have. And I, all I can really respond to is, but you don't have to sell it, and you don't have to lease it. So, I'm just here to tell you that I think I can, it's in my best interest, if I can get you all's approval to do so, to go the out parcel route.
And we expect you to do so.
All right. Thank you, Phil.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion and/or comments and/or questions?
I'm assuming that if, let's say we were to vote to split this up, if someone were to come forth with a plan for a six-unit strip center, could that still be done, with it being subdivided, or would it have to be combined again, sort of undo what we just...
Sure. It depends on how big they wanted to do it. If they came in and said, "We want to recombine these and do a wonderful multi-tenant building," then they would just be able to do that administratively, because it's getting, it's resulting in the loss of a lot, and so it's getting less dense. So, certainly, and if it was within our confines of 20,000 square feet or less, then it could be a staff approval, but certainly, we would ensure that it met all the design criteria in South Park. So, you would have, as well as any, regardless of your decision tonight, RUSH is sure that any building as what you've seen tonight will all be complementary colors and brick types and all those materials that have set forth South Park.
So, basically, what he's really looking for is just flexibility with doing something in addition to what is already envisioned.
Yeah. Right. In terms of a master plan, it's the master plan that, that's here, and the reason it has to go through this process is currently, it shows a maximum of 14 lots, and they want to add one more, so they don't have the ability to do that, so this is what...
Interesting. All righty.
So, yeah, we're not, it doesn't mean we have to go with the out parcel, the individual.
Can I just clarify a question, too? I would like to add that, that the staff was trying to adhere to what a previous council had already approved as a vision, and it was, I think it's already been pointed out, that was some time ago, years ago, in fact, that that was approved, and it has taken time for us to get to this point.
Sure.
I think the staff, I know Gina and I had discussed the market factors associated with where we're at today, and I think everyone is fully aware of that, but the staff, we feel, and I'm part of that, we feel obligated to share with you the information of what was initially approved, because quite honestly, staff doesn't have that flexibility to sort of go off the reservation, particularly after the council has already approved a particular concept plan, which is the case in this particular...
So, there's no other main reason that they're, they'd go one way or the other right now, that they're suggesting or recommending, but just going off of...
That is correct. That is absolutely correct.
That's good to know.
Okay.
So, what could potentially fit on that point, 75, 79? Is something the equivalent of the Sherman Williams Building, or Dairy Queen, or Burger King?
Yeah, but, draft a restaurant would be hard to get the stacking and full circulation around it, probably, you could, you could do it if it was a smaller building, or you could have, you know, or you could have a gas station facility, or a Sherman Williams Building, I mean, either, any one of those things could, could go there.
Something of that size.
That size, yes. Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's go to motion. Here, approve or deny?
Motion, I'll make the motion to approve the master plan amendment 002 MAS 11 A13 for South Park Village, as submitted by McKim and Creed, project number 3438-0001, dated November 26, 2014, with the amendments as put on the board.
Second.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously to approve the master plan amendment. Okay? Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Agenda item 8B, and our new business, Avant Ferry Road Widening Design Contract 12-003. This is a big one.
It is, thank you, Mayor, Town Council.
Thank you, Aaron.
Go for it.
As you all know, we have several projects in the vicinity of Avant Ferry, the intersection with the bypass. The one shown in yellow is the Intersection Improvement Project, which is slated to start now this summer. We've got the Spot Safety Project, and the project that I'm presenting today is the Avant Ferry Road Improvement Project, and that stretches from the bypass all the way slightly west of Pine Grove Wilbon Road. The town has awarded a grant from Campo, and this is going to be administered by DOT for the design of the, this road widening project, or improvement project. And what it's going to do is going to bring the road up to a two-lane, median-divided roadway section with turn, turn lanes right and left. The grant was for $144,000 to be paid, or administered by DOT with a 20% match by the town. And since then, we've been awarded right-of-way acquisition money in the amount of $80,000 with a $20,000 match by Holly Springs. The town solicited letters of interest from design firms, and we received eight. We went through a selection process, and Ramey Kemp was selected based on their past experience with DOT roadway, or DOT administered projects, and their roadway design experience. Contract is for $186,000, $144 will be paid by DOT, or administered by DOT, and $42,000 by Holly Springs. Now, contrary to the map shown here on the north side of Avant Ferry Road, we are going to be extending the sidewalk to the intersection. Any questions?
Does it go from trotter bluffs up, or does it go further, the sidewalk?
Correct, trotter bluffs all the way to the intersection.
Oh, so, look on the other side of Trotter Bluff.
No, there is, there's the yellow sidewalk shown on the, on the south end, and it actually connects to an existing sidewalk.
I'm talking about on the same, oh, okay, I'm looking at a different thing.
Are you talking up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk there as well, and it ends here at Pine Grove.
So, Aaron, so it looks like there's a light going right there next to Goodwill?
Yes, that's...
Going up in front, okay, so...
That's of the DOT Spot Safety Project.
I just, I'm looking at Trotter Bluffs, coming out of the subdivision. Is that, that green's a median right there?
That is. Yeah, the median spacing only allowed for one median break.
So, that's take a right and do a U-turn?
Yes.
Do we know if there's going to be a cut through to, mortgage, okay, all right, that's, I was like, okay.
It's going to come out to a wide.
Yes, that's, thank you.
That would make life a lot easier.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, I was just about, okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? You got some more?
No, that's all I had.
These monies are coming out of reserves, I'm assuming.
Yes, street reserves.
Again, I think it's, it's fair to mention that $144,000 will come from DOT, and we continue to get questions about how much DOT helps us, they help us, okay? We appreciate it. Right, Kendra? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just a long process.
Yes.
Just do it yesterday, okay? Is that a deal?
We expect it to begin in June, Aaron?
He's on it.
The yellow, the intersection project is going to be June.
And then this?
And then we're starting the design now, we had to go through a long process with DOT, a little back and forth, so the, the money, while it is nice, it, you know, sometimes it takes a little bit of time.
Six to 12 months, maybe 18 months.
18 months, we're expecting a summer of 16.
Okay.
Right, correct. Right, design a right-of-way.
That's why I said it's a long process.
This is a great drawing, too, I appreciate. Is this something that will be shared publicly anytime soon?
I think it's up on our website, but we will make sure it is.
Okay.
I think it is, I think it is.
That would be awesome.
With the widening, not just the bypass, that'd be awesome.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'll get it up there.
That'd be great, Aaron, thank you.
Anything else? No? Motion? We have one.
Motion to award contract in the amount of $185,731.37 to Ramsey Kemp and Associates for design of the Avant Ferry Road Widening Project.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Yesterday.
Yep.
All right, agenda item 8C, and our new business, the 2015 Street Resurfacing Listing, Kendra Parish.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, a few years back, we had a pavement condition survey, that's something that we do every like five to six years. We have a firm come in, they ride all the streets in Holly Springs, and there's actually a very objective spreadsheet of factors that they look at, and they rank from the worst to the best, and that becomes the list in which we work from doing resurfacing. So, if you think about it, sort of like asset management, you do a little bit each year, and then we end up just continually maintaining our assets and not ending up with big street projects. So, that's the way we've been operating for several years now, and what's before you tonight, each year we come before you and we say, here's where we're at on the list. We, so this year, we have about 400,000 in power bill funds, and the next roads that are on the list to be done is Holly Glen Subdivision, it's Holly Meadow Drive from Sycamore to Holly Branch Drive, so that's the main road that connects in Holly Glen Subdivision, it's basically that, the round street.
Where that speed bump?
Yes, mhm. Ballin Ridge Subdivision, Sturminster Drive, Thornton Green Place, and Chilmark, and then Arbor Creek Subdivision, right there at Hyannis and Ostrivale, it's just that first block in is really torn up, and so what we're trying, you know, what they're out there looking at when they're grading the road is, if you have alligator cracking, if you continue to let that occur, you have the freeze thaw, it rains, it freezes, it pushes it apart, you see a lot of potholes happen after snowstorms, that's what we're trying to get in on these roads that have a lot of the alligator cracking, and go ahead and fix those so that the subsurface does not get exposed. So, what we'll do is, if you're in agreement with doing these streets here as outlined on the list, we will do the plans, we'll put it out for bid, if say bids came in really good, and we had enough for the next street on the list, we'll go to the next street, and then we always, with any construction project, we bring the bid tabs to you, and we'd say, you know, they're low, so now we're doing this street, so...
Well, where is this list, y'all, is that online?
No, it's not online. We're actually getting towards the end of the list, and I've got a request for proposals, getting ready to go out for the next update of it. And it was something that we also sort of look at, if you go strictly down the list, like, one year, I think there was like an overwhelming number that was in just Sunset Ridge. Well, you like to spread the funds around the community, not just, and so a lot of times we look at that, it's like, you know, going down the list, but we may alter just a little bit to kind of spread funds out, so, you know, it's not a, I guess it's not a popularity or a political thing, it's really just objective, so...
No, no, the reason I was asking for that was just a curiosity, where it all is, because the town is, is very large now, I mean, that list should be getting very long.
Mhm, it is.
Do you have a fourth one picked out already in your mind?
No.
Not yet?
Not, not yet.
One more time, what are, what makes you choose, I know you said the community, but what else, factors make you...
So, they look at the condition of the road.
Right.
And they rate it, like, say it's on a scale from one to 10, and it's alligator cracking, any kind of subsurface, like, if there's dips in the road, something that indicates that there's a subsurface issue, highly traveled roads. We've had a, there's been a couple instances where some smaller cul-de-sacs were pretty messed up, but it was seven houses, versus taking $60,000 and putting it on a road that has, you know, it's the main drive into the subdivision, so sometimes there's those decisions that are made.
So, if, okay, let me, if there's a cul-de-sac that's really rough, and it only really affects four or five houses, is that looked at just as equal basis as one that goes, is hardly traveled by a lot of people?
We would look at, like, if there was a cul-de-sac that served seven houses, and it was going to cost $60,000, $70,000 to fix that, or we could spend $60,000 and hit, like, a Lynx one, or something that's like a main thoroughfare, more bang for your buck would be to hit the higher traveled road.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Right. So, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Looking good?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kendra. Motion?
Need a motion on this?
There it is. One motion.
Motion to approve the 2015 Street Resurfacing Project.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you, Kendra.
Thank you.
I remember nine other business, a couple things, crosswalk update, we're making some progress, but right out in front of Town Hall, we still have a little problem, and I've already requested that, Kendra, I think you took care of that, another sign there, because the sign is now not there anymore, and I have noticed people not stopping. So, thank you for the help on that. The anti-bullying campaign crusade is still going strong, and I also want to welcome back Andy Spey from, raise your hand, everybody knows who you are.
He's hiding back there.
Haven't seen you for a while, glad to have you back. And that's all I got, other business.
Just want to put Kendra on the spot, just an update on the sidewalk on Grigsby, is there any status on that? I know some people have been asking about it.
So, Grigsby, the section that, of sidewalk that's missing, it's around the curve, right there by Wombo Park, our legal department has acquired that right-of-way, and our public works department, actually, Aaron met with them, was it yesterday? So, now that we have right-of-way, and they have the plans, and we have our permits, he sat down, he met with Luntsey, and Luntsey was interested in doing it. But it's going to be cheaper if Luntsey does it than if we bid it out, so it's more cost-effective, not cheaper, more cost-effective. So, it's moving forward.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Have we talked about the road, I mean, going in, there's a lot of cars that go back there, with the road going into Sud Farm, and is that going to be widened? Have we talked about that?
As develop, right, Grigsby, as development comes in, they're going to be doing curb and gutter, asphalt widening and curb and gutter, sort of like the parks that pass, like, right there at Sud Farm. That is just as development occurs, there's nothing on the CIP to date for the town to go in and fund roadway improvements along Grigsby, but it's on the thoroughfare plan, so if anybody comes in, they would have to widen their front edge. And it needs to be widened, but there are other places in town that need to be widened, but it's...
Yeah, we will.
Now, okay, go ahead, other business we're still talking about?
Other business, sure.
Other business, I think was brought up tonight about other parks in the area, are we, are we planning on doing anything, or is that going to be a subject that's going to come up at the retreat? Park, new park?
New parks? It'll come up right after new funding.
Our additional funding.
We can have that discussion, I may, that, what was suggested earlier doesn't sound
like it would take up a lot of space, and so I'm sure we could have that discussion. I would, I would ask our Parks and Recreation Director and Assistant Director to take a look at that.
Well, I think some of the comments that was made was not so much, do we have enough parks, I mean, we have plenty of parks, but most of the parks are on one side of town. Some of the neighbors are saying, why aren't we not having parks on our side of town? I think it was Green Oaks area does not have, I mean, I, we have plenty on my side, but Green Oaks needs it in these new subdivisions down Avant Ferry Road, so I think we need, that's something we need to talk about.
We'll look at it.
The problem with that is, is we don't, we just spent all of our money on...
Well, that may be, but we need to put it on, yeah, we need to put it on the discussion, just because we don't have the money right now, doesn't mean we don't discuss it.
Right, right, got it. What else? That? Okay, manager's report.
Yeah, we, I think it had been brought up, Councilwoman Williams had brought up a couple months ago, just wanted to know what the status of the old oak tree that was removed on Holly Springs Road, we had to cut that down, I think it had died, and the Parks and Recreation Staff has replanted a tree there, and I think an email was sent out.
We got an email, thank you.
And I wanted to share that publicly, since it was brought up at the council meeting, they've done that, and thanks to Parks and Recreation Staff for that. Also, Joni got some correspondence in the mail, or I guess email, earlier about one-stop voting, and I think she wanted to share that with you tonight, because a decision needs to be made before the next council meeting. because a decision needs to be made before the next council meeting, so if we could, you got just a moment?
It costs about $23,000 for us to have a one-stop voting place here for the next election, and I can put it in next year's budget request. Can you explain what that is?
What does that mean?
One-stop voting, it's the early voting location where voters don't have to wait until their polling day. They can go to a selected location.
Oh, okay.
Let's say, we say it's the cultural center for sake of argument, and they can go there between the hours of 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM for a month before the November election. But we have to man it, we don't man it, Board of Elections man it, man's it, we have to pay for it. So during the bigger elections, we sometimes have had a one-stop vote.
We did, yeah.
This year, you know, we didn't, because it's not a presidential year or anything like that, but next year will be the 15th, we'll have a slate of officers from this board. So if you want a one-stop voting, if you could just let me know, either by email or not, just so I can let the Board of Elections know to plan for it, they have to hire the people, and.
Does the board want to decide tonight?
You said it was about $23,000?
Twenty-three thousand, right?
Twenty-three thousand for the period of the one-stop, for the month, yeah. Yeah, but you have to pay those people, you have to pay those people every day.
And that's for the 15th, you're talking about 2015?
2015, and I would recommend it probably for a presidential election, yeah, 2016, but.
I'm not sure about.
I can probably see it for the presidential, but I'd be, because the only thing that's going to be on our ballot, I think, is just the, the R2 seats, as far as I know, there's nothing else on it.
That's probably true.
Yeah, I concur on that.
And if someone does want to vote early, there is always the absentee ballot option as well, if they don't want to, wish to go downtown.
Awesome, other, I neglected to mention, and then thank you for saying it, there's going to be other one-stop voting locations that the Board of Elections does.
Oh, okay.
If you play Apex, but if we want to have one.
I could see spending $23,000 on other stuff.
Okay.
They usually do a pretty good job of spreading them out in various quadrants of the county. I know last, last election day, it was pretty well spread out.
Right.
There wasn't one here, but it was pretty well distributed, and I think they pay attention to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we get calls here at Town Hall, people wanting to know where they can go, and we tell them, Hunter Street and Apex, and they're happy to go.
Maybe we just, you know, promote those locations a little more this year, and then in.
During the presidential.
I think we had it once for a presidential.
We did.
Yeah, I have done it on presidential years, I just didn't have, y'all wanted to.
Yeah, that was, that was when Nixon was running.
I wasn't living here then.
Grover Cleveland Alexander was running, as I recall.
Talking about that, I, is there, to me, to have that voting place out there at the firing range is a huge disadvantage for everybody that's living down in Holly Glen and all those other places. How do we get the Board of Elections to pick something that's more central to a lot of the people that are affected by that?
I actually talked to them about that, because like I look at Holly Grove Elementary School, I think only maybe 160 people are supposed to vote there, considering the thousands that.
Are there.
So, I didn't get much of that. They said the fire station didn't have ample parking, although it has more parking now than it did before we did it.
Maybe they can look at it again.
Yeah, but if someone else would take a look at that, I'd appreciate it.
I think, if I'm remembering correctly, they moved it to the firing range, wasn't it? Because the fire station was under construction.
Right, we had it at the Holly Glen Clubhouse, but that became a little bit of an issue, so we, they had to move it, that was really.
Maybe we can have them look into that, getting a relocation of that, because we need something that's more central to, to everybody that's affected by that district.
For people to go vote.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
In fact, the road, the road is, I think, a little dangerous, it's two-lane highways.
When I communicate with them about this, I'll ask them about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Johnny. Anything else? Close session, Counselor.
Oh, my goodness.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.